Welcome to the regular meeting on January 19th, 2021 for the Montgomery ISD School Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, a pledge of allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you for joining us tonight, ladies and gentlemen. Dr. Morrison, are there any special recognitions?
There is. I'd like to ask our Director of Communications, Justin Moreno, to come forward. Very excited, as our board, I hope knows, our public may not, it is Board Appreciation Month, and we are very excited to acknowledge our Montgomery ISD Board of Trustees. Justin, the floor is yours.
Good evening, trustees, Dr. Morrison. That's right, January is Board Appreciation Month. So tonight, our symbol recognition is you, the board. Tasby's theme this year is navigating to success. So on behalf of the district, we'd like to thank you for your service in navigating us through this truly unprecedented school year. We wanted, our principals wanted to show their appreciation. They've provided you with some items from each of their campuses, to make sure that you can represent the bears and lions out in the community or your office or wherever you may be. Also included is a golden ticket to Montgomery ISD. This will get you anywhere in the district.
[laughing]
Finally, you'll notice a helicopter. If you recall, at our last board shop with Tasby, Ms. Douglas analogized the role of a trustee to a helicopter. So we thought it was appropriate to provide you with this. And the best part of the helicopter, it was produced in the Montgomery High School Engineering Class-
Oh, cool.
-by a 3D printer. So I'd like to give a special shout out to Ms. Jennifer Duffer, who helped out with that. And we have a short video with a special message from some of our amazing students across the district.
This school year has presented some unprecedented challenges. Yet through it all, you have continued to lead Montgomery ISD as we move forward in our journey-
To become the premier school district in Texas.
And while there's still work to be done to finish this school year strong-
We're taking this time during school board recognition month to celebrate you.
This school year has pushed us out of our comfort zones and challenged us to use talents and skills we never knew we had.
And for our board of trustees, it was no different.
You helped lead us through uncharted waters with quick problem solving, steady teamwork, and bold leadership.
Confronting the challenges presented by a pandemic during an unprecedented school year quickly became a daily task, complicated by constant changes to laws and the varying needs of the Montgomery community. Strong leadership was required, and that's exactly what our board provided.
The Montgomery ISD Board of Trustees responded to an urgent call of action when it was needed the most.
Taking necessary steps to protect our most treasured assets, our students, and ensuring we safely move forward academically with in-person instruction.
This year, they also approved well-deserved employee pay raises.
School board members are the largest group of elected officials in the state. There's more than 7,000 across Texas.
These school district leaders are farmers, doctors, business owners, retired, and young professionals. They're the people you see in stores, at the game, and in your neighborhood.
Being a member of the board is a tough job with no salary.
Not only do these selfless volunteers work hard to get elected to their positions-
They also undergo mandated training.
Their role as a board member requires giving up valuable personal time, having a bold vision, and making careful decisions.
Their job is critical!
The work to deliver an excellent education experience for the nearly 9,000 students in Montgomery ISD requires dedication and creativity in even the best of times.
And that's why we're taking this opportunity to honor our Board of Trustees.
We encourage you to take a moment to salute the selfless work all trustees are doing to grow Montgomery ISD students.
On behalf of MISD students and staff, we want to thank our trustees for their selfless work. They're shaping our future leaders.
Thank you!
Thank you!
Thank you!
Thank you!
So, Mr. Fuller, yesterday was Dr. Martin Luther King Day, and Dr. King had a quote and said, "We all can be great because we all have the ability to serve." Service on the Montgomery ISD Board of Education, I wish it came with better monetary compensation, but you have the gratitude of a very grateful school district and community. So, again, on behalf of our entire school district, we want to acknowledge you for Board Appreciation Month, and let's give our board members a big hand.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison, and thank you to the kiddos and the principals and teachers that put that together. I promise I'm not going to cry. So, are there any public comments?
There are.
There are no public comments. Thank you. Moving on, does anyone wish to pull any items from the consent agenda for discussion? Then is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hopkins, seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstained. Motion carries. Consent agenda carries. All right. Action items. Focusing on our action items for tonight, we are first looking at the consideration of approval for the 2021-2022 MISD instructional calendar. Dr. Sonia Lopez is going to give us a presentation on that.
Good evening, board. So it's my privilege tonight to stand before you and talk to you a little bit about the work that's done for the district, from the District Advisory Committee, that started back in October. So, if we could go through the calendar process to give you a little, I'm going to have to stand, I want to walk and present, I have to stand in front of the mic so it could be recorded. To tell you a little bit about the calendar process overview, MISD's District Advisory Committee facilitates the development of an academic calendar to present to you at tonight's board meeting. The District Advisory Committee is established according to BQA Local, and it shows, you can see that we have two parents, elementary and secondary, community members, appointed district-level members, three campus members, a professional, two teachers, two business members, and MISD includes one member from each department of child nutrition, technology, maintenance, and special education. So we have a total of 43 members that are on this District Advisory Committee. We start the year off in October with talking about the parameters of the calendar, and teachers must work 187 days according to the state of Texas. That's in their contract. The state of Texas also says that we should have 75,600 operational minutes in a calendar. So we start with those parameters. And then we talk about calendar non-negotiables in prior years. These DAC members, they serve two two-year terms. That adds up to four years, and so there's a mixture of brand-new people and people who have been on the calendar, on the committee for, you know, up to three years, and this being their fourth. So, non-negotiables, we talk a little bit about how teachers like to come back to a shortened first week. They like to establish some procedures on like a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or a Thursday, Friday. They like first semester to end before winter break, for both semesters to be evenly distributed, minus the extra days that we test in the secondary semester, have our grading periods evenly distributed. We like to have a week at Thanksgiving now. Parents like that also. Time to take a trip. Winter break, two weeks, two complete weeks, not 14 days, but two complete weeks, being from Monday through Friday, Monday through Friday, being off. Return in January to a staff work day. We've actually had a time period where we came straight back into students, and that didn't go over so well. So we've learned from that. We know we definitely have to have a staff work day before we come back in January. Spring break, we want that to align with Conroe, because we do have so many families that work either for us and Conroe, so we kind of watch that. And then we always try to have certain holiday observations that are a definite, we don't want, we don't want to bring kids or our teachers back. Days like that would be possibly Good Friday or Martin Luther King Junior Day. So to tell you a little bit about the timeline, I mentioned October. We have our first in-person meeting, DAC meeting, and the calendar discussion begins. We go over all those parameters. We talk about guidelines. We leave from there, and all of those people go back to their committees on their campuses. Campus advisory committees, parents go back to their parents' group, businesses, and so forth. They get a lot of input, and then we do a lot of emailing back and forth, trying to do, put together different draft calendars. So in November, we have our second in-person DAC meeting. That feedback gathered, discussed, draft calendars are created, and members receive those draft calendars, and then they take those back and solicit more input from their stakeholders. In December, DAC members vote from five, those five, or we created five calendars this year. Five calendars went to two, and then we took those two calendars to a public survey from mid-December, when we left for break, into the first week of January. So public survey issue, two calendar options were provided, and then in January, we had our third meeting, where we discussed what the results were, and then what would be the process and what would be the recommendation to bring to you tonight. And so here we are tonight, presenting that recommendation. So some of the subcommittee results, some of the big topics that come out of those committees, professional development days are always on the discussion board. You know, how many days do you need at the beginning of the year? This calendar for this year and next year consists of a professional development day in October and in February. It's tied on to a day off, a holiday on Monday. We've gotten feedback that parents and our teachers and our staff did appreciate that. We were able to accomplish that in next year's calendar. We talk a lot about the first day of school. Everybody wants to start a little bit later. Remember the days when we started after Labor Day? Well, if you're going to get all those minutes in and those days in, and you try to finish before Memorial Day, it kind of squinches that time period. So, first day of school, we talk about first day of start date, winter break times, and then we got some really innovative ideas for instructional days this year, because you can't help but talking about workdays and professional development, and it kind of leads into some really good discussion just about school in general. So the two calendars, and I know that you've seen them, we had Draft A was a modified instructional day, and then we had Draft B, which continued on with some of the PLC Wednesdays that we started this year. Our survey results during that time period, we had 3,542 survey results, with Calendar A receiving 57% of the vote, and Calendar B receiving 43% of the vote. And you can see the breakdown of the voting there. 2,020 votes for Calendar A and 1,522 votes in Calendar B. And so tonight, we bring to you the recommended calendar, Draft A, the modified instructional day. And notice that these bullet points look a lot about those non-negotiables that we kind of talked about before. This one does have a shortened first week of school, with it being Thursday, Thursday and Friday. The first semester does end before winter break. Both semesters and grading periods are evenly distributed. Again, second semester's always longer to account for state testing days. We do have the professional development and the workday in October and February, like our 2021 calendar. We have a full weekend Thanksgiving, two full weeks at winter. Staff returns in January to a staff work day, spring break week aligning with Conroe, and we did have those preferred holiday observations in our calendar. So taking a look at the instructional minutes, we were able to accomplish 178 days of student instructional days. That's four, five more days than we have this year. We do accomplish the at least 75,600 minutes with some minutes to spare. And notice that the minutes to spare are only 240 and 360. So I want to make sure I kind of highlight those, the words in red. And if we can go on to the next slide so we can see it really big. It says, "The instructional minutes in the adopted calendar may be subject to administrative adjustment based on the following: TEA adjustments related to remote learning, or COVID-19 conditions and consideration of needs of students and of teachers," like we did this year. So although the calendar is published with those days and those minutes, we need to make, we may need to make some adjustments depending on what occurs in the next school year. We don't know what it's going to look like yet. So should the administration determine a need to address the instructional minutes, then we'll go back to DAC, discuss that, have a recommendation, and then we'll present, bring that back to the Board of Trustees. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So with the selection or presentation of Calendar A, that removes the late arrival Wednesdays and early release for the-
Correct.
-secondary and elementary. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Board members, other questions?
I don't have a question, but just a statement. I really like this presentation, because I just feel like it's so transparent and so informative that I think the community will really see this and the breakdown of how many people voted, and really understand this process and how much thought is put into it, and trust, you know, what the final result is. It's very informative. I really like that.
Much appreciated. DAC will appreciate that.
All right, hearing no more questions. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the 2020, 21-22 MISD instructional calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dennison, seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstained.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez.
All right, next up, we are looking at the consideration of approval for requests for qualifications, facility assessment for, by Mr. Chris Lynn.
Good evening. This evening, we're asking for your approval of the RFQ for facility assessment. So I want to start with a little background. We like to talk in acronyms in the education world, so let me start by saying RFQ stands for Request for Qualifications, okay? It is a procurement method utilized for seeking out professional services and is authorized by the Texas Government Code under Section 2254. Under this method, the district must determine the most qualified provider based on competence and qualifications, not price, okay? So what is a facility assessment? It is a thorough review of our district facilities conducted by a team of architects, engineers, and consultants. This team will walk each facility and evaluate items such as roofing, mechanical equipment, plumbing, site, ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, technology, and many other things. The purpose of this assessment is to provide the district with a comprehensive list of deficiencies and/or needs for each facility. And these items will be prioritized based on severity. And so why are we doing this? As a part of the budget planning process, obviously, we want to be proactive moving forward as a district. And so we need to have an identified list of all of those potential deficiencies or items that need to be replaced and develop an appropriate replacement schedule that will assist us in utilizing our district general fund dollars, as well as any remaining funds left over from the 2015 bond program, okay? And so to talk a little bit about the RFQ that we released, we issued the RFQ back in November. It was advertised on November 20th and 27th, meeting all state guidelines. Submissions from interested firms were due on December the 17th, and we received eight submissions from interested firms. All of those qualifications were evaluated based on the criteria that were contained in the RFQ. And in your board packet this evening, you have the ranking of those eight firms from one to eight. As I mentioned earlier, it is incumbent upon the district to determine the most qualified provider, and so you will not see any pricing in those numbers. Based on our review of those qualifications, we are asking this evening that you select Huckabee Architects as the firm to provide facility assessment services for Montgomery ISD, and allow district administration to negotiate and finalize contract terms for these services.
Just to add on to what Mr. Lynn shared, Ms. Turner mentioned the commitment to transparency. We have to make sure that we constantly are updating our public about how our schools are situated, the facility needs, and a lot of times, we will have folks come to public comment or go to a PTA, PTO meeting, and someone will inevitably say, "When is it our turn to get a new roof?" Or we're hearing that there's heating issues or air conditioning issues. We have to be able to have a list that we can update our public, and right now, this is a huge need in our district to get that information to share, not only with the board, but with our public. At the conclusion of this process, we'll go back out to our schools. We'll make sure that our schools feel we got it right. We'll start to put it together in a very thoughtful list, bring it back to the board for consideration, and then that will then start, as Mr. Lynn said, to help inform our budget process, not only for this year, but in upcoming years. But you don't know what needs to get fixed until you know where there's a problem, so.
So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So this will assist us in putting together a deferred maintenance program, basically, is what this is for.
Yes, sir. And that is currently lacking at this moment.
Yes.
Other questions?
Who puts together the tabulation data? Like, where does that data come from?
So there were, there were MISD employees, myself and our Director of Maintenance, who reviewed each proposal and scored them. And then Dr. Morrison also reviewed that information, reviewed the recommendation to see if, you know, if he agreed. And that's why we're here tonight. He did agree with our recommendation to move forward.
And I do think, Mr. Hammond, that is a little bit different of past practice, is for me to remove it myself from that process until the recommendation from staff comes to me. I review it. I either approve it or send it back for consideration, and I bring forward my recommendation to the board, and it's your decision in terms of accept my recommendation.
Did they say how long the process will take to do the evaluation? That was part of the criteria in the RFQ. They, it stated in the RFQ that they have three months from award of a contract to get these services done and report back to the district. So we're anticipating late spring, early summer, May-ish. So there hasn't been one, there has not been one of these done in the past, as I understand it, correct? I believe the last one that was done was around 2014, in preparation for the 2015 bond. So there was one done then. It's seven years ago, so things change. And as I understand it, there were deferred maintenance items that were originally scheduled to be a part of the 2015 bond that were pulled out because of cost considerations. And so we, we need to make sure that we get the most updated information that's out there so we know how to proceed. How often should these be done? Well, it's our intent from this point forward to keep that deferred maintenance list updated. You know, occasionally, you know, every so often, depending on how often the board feels this needs to be done. It needs to be updated professionally, but it's our intent to take this assessment and really create those replacement schedules so that we can plan out as a district when roofs need to be done, when HVAC equipment needs to be replaced. And right now, we just don't have those schedules in place.
This will be our guideline for our maintenance department moving forward.
Exactly. Mr. Lynn, I have one question, and I know your explanation of why there's no price on there right now is very clear, and I think it's very informative for the public. I guess my question is, what happens next with the price? Who negotiates that? And who do we as a board need to remind that we do have financial goals we're trying to accomplish here? Sure. So if you move forward with the recommendation tonight, we will be in contact, myself and Dr. Morrison will be in contact with Huckabee, and we will start the negotiation process. Just because you select them tonight does not mean it's a guaranteed done deal. If we cannot agree on price or any other contractual terms, then we can end those negotiations, and we can move to the company ranked number two in the rankings. And that process will continue until either the district reaches satisfactory contract terms with a, with a company, or we decide to not do it and possibly put it out again to see if we get any other interested firms to participate. Thank you. Yes, sir. Are there any other questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to the approval request for qualifications for facility assessment.
And is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstained. That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Thank you.
Dr. Fuller, I'm going to excuse myself.
Thank you. All right, moving on, we are looking at-
Next, we have something I'm really excited about. It feels very appropriate during Board Appreciation Month, that the Montgomery ISD Board of Trustees is doing something that has not been done before in our district. We are just now starting the legislative process in the great state of Texas, and traditionally, Montgomery ISD has not necessarily been a proactive participant in engaging and talking about the needs of our district, our students, and our faculty, and our community. This board has decided to do a different process, and so tonight, we bring forward the work of the Board Subcommittee on Legislative Platform, and we're going to have Justin Moreno, our Executive Director of Communications, introduce the beginning part of that work.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison and trustees. Once again, good evening. Excited to present to you for consideration the adoption of a 2021 legislative platform. Lawmakers have convened in Austin for the 87th Texas Legislative Session, and in any year, the stakes are high for public education. You could, you can say that every session is a public education session. So this platform will represent the policy priorities of Montgomery ISD on key education-related issues, as our state lawmakers conduct their work at the Capitol this session. It's important that the voice of Montgomery ISD is heard in Austin, and we're confident that by the board adopting a legislative platform for the first time, that's, we're taking a positive step in that direction. A little background on development of the platform, a subcommittee of the board containing Board President Fuller, Trustee Turner, and Trustee Hopkins worked with Dr. Morrison and myself over the past month to develop the platform. We looked at several issues that we believe lawmakers will be deliberating this year in Austin, and ultimately landed on five core issues, or what I call the pillars of the platform. And first is school finance. Lawmakers made incredible strides in updating the school finance system in 2019 through House Bill III. We hope that they can continue to build upon this momentum. Assessment and accountability is the second pillar. We're asking lawmakers to continue to focus on how accountability is measured, to ensure that instructional practice is aligned but not driven by state assessments. COVID-19 support. We're asking lawmakers to consider continued support from the state as we work through challenges associated with COVID-19 and meeting the needs of our children. Operation Connectivity provided tremendous support to Montgomery ISD, and we'd like to see this program remain in place in the long term. Local control. As a district of innovation, we have that designation with the TEA. We have added flexibilities in local decision-making. We're asking that these flexibilities remain in place, and that our elected school boards are further empowered to make decisions that best meet the needs of their individual communities. And school safety. We're asking lawmakers for continued support in securing our buildings and creating safe school environments, and also requesting support to meet the mental health needs of students as well. This is also a critical component when we talk about ensuring schools are safe places where productive academic instruction can occur. So, proposed next steps, if the board moves toward approving the platform, we would engage in targeted communication with our elected officials, our delegation, legislative leadership, and members of the Education Committee, make strategic visits to the Capitol when appropriate, and stay engaged throughout the 140-day legislative session. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno and Dr. Morrison. I'd like to turn it over to the board members who were on the committee, Mr. Hopkins, Ms. Turner, and myself. Anything y'all want to throw in there in addition to Mr. Moreno's presentation?
So I think it's, it's important that we, as a district, and as we, all the three of us, and Dr. Morrison, are working through this, this platform is a first for MISD.
and Dr. Morrison, are working through this, this platform is a first for M I S D. But it ensures that we have a voice at the state level. There are a lot of things that come down, Robin Hood being one of them, in understanding how that affects our budgets, also the, you know, how it affects our school finance, our ability to plan and manage our district financially. And then the assessment accountability portion of it is, how are we measured? And are those measurements reflective of what we feel is best for our district, our kids, our teachers, and our administrators? So those things are voices that we want to drive upwards into our state legislators. We've already seen today, some feedback today with legislators reaching out to us. And we were on some meetings recently with other school board members in other districts. And we are one of the first to adopt a legislative platform, which is very unique. And I think it will allow us to manage our district in a way that give us better control over what we do. And our destiny as a district as opposed to what other districts are doing. So that voice is really important. I intend to work with the other members of the board if we adopt this. And we are going to reach out, and we're going to engage.
I just want to say that I've enjoyed being a part of this subcommittee. I'm glad that I've gotten to help work on this. The topic here that is very special to me is the assessment and accountability. As an educator myself, I've been a part of the whole STAR process, and I know there's a lot of different opinions on STAR. But that is our way that our state uses right now to assess and keep accountability for our schools. I know in the summer, when all this COVID was happening and all this, I'm thinking to myself, man, I hope they don't have to give the STAR test this year. That was my initial thought with all the stresses of dealing with COVID. But as we continue discussing it and finding out that it came down from T E A that we will not be getting a rating based on our results of our STAR test this year, but we're going to be able to use those results as a baseline, also find out where our gaps are because of the time we were quarantined back in the spring. And we're going to be able to move forward with that knowledge, and I think we can gain a lot. So we are in support of what's going on right now with continuing that accountability with that assessment this spring.
Thank you. And then lastly, one of the elements that I care a lot about is school safety. Any session that, whenever the lawmakers are in session, they should be considering school safety, I think. I also want to, you know, answer the question of why do we need a legislative platform? In my opinion, that's a, the reason we need this element is that that shows us that we're ready to take our discussions to Austin. That shows that our district is ready to be mobile, to be politically active. And lastly, I would like to say, as Dr. Morrison has said before, this is really the board's platform. And so we will need to come together, we'll need to make phone calls, and as you saw the letters that we'll be sending out, make a variety of communications that we'll need to do as a team. And so tonight, this subcommittee is coming to the board as a whole to ask your support and, you know, get that approval going forward. So with that, are there any questions? I bet if we wait long enough, Mr. Hammond will be back just for his voters. Got a little choked up, and so we just want to give him a second. But if there are no questions, I will, we still have a quorum, so we can still proceed. So I'll ask if there's a motion.
I'll move to approve the M I S D legislative platform.
And is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstained. That motion passes. Thank you very much. And thank you to the board members that have contributed your time on that committee. Next, we're moving forward to information items tonight. And the school district has a few information items to share. First, the taper report, Texas Academic Performance Report. Mr. McFadden.
Thank you. Want to thank my colleagues. I thought I was going to be rushed. It looks like I have a full hour and 20 minutes, Dr. Morrison. So y'all can settle in and get comfortable.
When are evaluations coming?
The annual report, I think this is my eighth time through the annual report, for you old guys up there. Looks the same, except it's very different this year because of what Ms. Turner said. We have no STAR results, which we were never big fans of the STAR until we didn't have the STAR. And so the accountability part, you know, giving us a rating, one letter that means everything, we still maybe don't agree totally with, but the data was good data. And whether you believe, you know, you hear a lot of negatives on whether we're teaching to a test or we're doing, we're really not. We're teaching to the state curriculum, which are the TEACs. They just so happen to be on the test. But there's nothing in those that I've ever read that I wouldn't want my own child to know. I mean, they're good information. They're a way that we can measure and maintain and track our progress. And so the annual report is a report on last year. And the reason we wait till mid-year of this year is because we were waiting on the taper report to come out in November. Once it comes out in November, we have 60 days to put together an annual report. It's kind of like a company would put out a statement of annual, an annual report on the year that just happened. So this is really no new data for you guys, but it is some, it's a requirement from the Texas Education Code that we do this. And there are, it lists several things in this requirement that I'm going to go over here in a minute. It is on our website, or will be on our website after this presentation. It's on the misd.org, about M I S D tab, under Accountability. And then you'll see a tab for, or a listing for M I S D annual reports. And under that, you would just click on the date, 1920, and you would see this report that we're going to go through. It's about this thick if you print it out, because it's just a lot of documents that we collect together from the prior year and put together. There are seven sections. I'm not going to read this slide to you, because we're going to go through all seven sections therefore the hour and 20-minute presentation. The first part of it is the taper. And the taper is compiled by T E A. It's nothing we put together. They use our P E M's data. They use student assessment data. Big problem with this year is, since we did not administer STAR because of COVID last spring, we do not have any student assessment data from the school year from 1920. So all performance data, it kind of tricks you, because I opened the taper and I was like, my gosh, there's a lot of data on here. And then I started looking at the dates, and it's a complete repeat of last year's taper report. So it's useful, but it's really limited in its use for this year. But what we have used it for is to mark where we were, because we felt like we were really progressing on our goal of becoming an A district and being highly rated. And so we're going to be able to, when we give the STAR this year, we'll be able to really measure and assess where our gaps were compared to where we were. Now, that doesn't mean we're not doing things to address data this year, and we're going to talk about that in just a moment as well. But it still has a cover page, except this year, the 2020 district rating will be not rated, declared state of disaster. That'll be on every school district's taper report. It will have a special education determination status. You're either going to meet standard or improvement required. And then normally, you would have distinction designations that you earn from the accountability data, not issued for the 1920 school year because of COVID. Ours for this year looks like this. We're not rated, but we did meet requirements in special education, so that's always good. A typical campus one would look like this. It just simply says not rated because of the disaster. I want to talk a little bit about what the data actually says, because some of you guys are new on the board. I don't know how familiar you are with the A through F. But for 30 years or more, we had a system in Texas that only cared about one thing. It cared about getting kids over a predetermined low bar. That's all we cared about. You had to have 100% over the low bar, or as many as you could get over the low bar. What that does is that directs your attention to one segment of the classroom. And as long as you're over the low bar, you were getting low bar. We were, of course, that's a simplification. Good teachers were teaching to all kids in their class. But this system that we moved to eight years ago is really, is a really good system, a better system. It has three levels. Approaches grade level, which we call the low bar standard. We want kids over the low bar. The meets grade level, which is really making an A on the test and what would be considered college-ready. And then the masters level, which is an A+ or close to perfect, two to three questions missed, and you can get the masters. So you're really having to master the material and master the material that's covered on the exam in order to attain that letter. So it's a high, it's a high standard. Seven years ago, when we moved to this system, we really had to rethink instruction, because going from the low bar, and we really had to convince teachers that it's okay if we don't get every child over the low bar on the first attempt, but that we have to get more of our kids to the meets and more of our kids to the masters. And what that's called when you do that is progress. We have to show every, we're starting to move every kid a year, no matter where they are. They came to my class in sixth grade, masters. I need to move them a year further to the masters at the next level. If I have a kid that's barely passing it at the low bar, I need to at least get them to the low bar and higher if possible. Now, if I'm in a classroom teaching and I only teach to the bottom, think of it as a string, and I'm teaching to the bottom and I'm pushing the bottom of the string, what happens to the top of the string? It stays the same. It bunches up. But if I pull the top, if I teach to the masters in the meets level, I can move the whole classroom forward. And so what we found, it was a philosophical change. We have to teach the rigor of masters. If I have a kid that enters my class high, but I never teach to that higher level of rigor, I'm never going to get them there. And so if I only teach to that low bar, I'll never get my kids to move a solid year. And so it took a while to get them to understand, we've got programs for students that are having the trouble getting over the low bar. We've got RTI, we've got 504, we've got special ed, we've got lots of programs to help struggling kids. But we, every kid in that spectrum deserves the same attention that we're showing any other kid. And the kid that's high achieving needs to move a solid year of high achievement to the next level. So it's a system that's equitable to all kids. And so it's really, we feel like it's a better system. So we set some goals for our teachers, and we're going to show you the data. Even though it's not current data, I think it's data that lets you know how far we've traveled in this journey, and we're going to continue to travel, even though we've hit this blip called COVID. So approaches level, we're wanting to get 80 to 95% of every tested subject to the approaches level. We want all students to be striving to get to the college-ready. And so we want 60 to 80% of our kids to make an A on the exam. That's way out of line with the bell curve. We want our kids skewed to the higher achieving side of a bell curve. So we're really trying to get our kids, 60 to 80% of them to an A. And then we want 30 to 40 of them mastering it, perfect on the exam, two to three questions missed only. And so those are high standards, very high standards for teachers with kids entering their classroom, because they're entering at all the different levels along the spectrum. And so, again, we just repeat that since the STAR wasn't given, this is data from past years, but I'm just going to go through it quickly, just so you have an idea of where we're at. At the approaches level, the gray and black is the state, the orange is the region that we're in, and our scores are in purple. And I apologize to Lake Creek for going with purple, but it's a color I chose seven years ago. So you can see that at the approaches level, we are above our goals of 80 to 95% in all of the subjects across, which was really good. I can't show you a seven-year on the approaches, because they kept moving the low bar in the beginning. And so you can't match up apples to apples. But I can on the meets and the masters, because it's never changed. So if you look at the next level, which is meets, an A, or college-ready standard, we are shooting for 60 to 80%. And you can see here that we had 60 across the board or above, except in writing. And that's one of our growth areas. And we know the whole state is struggling with writing, and we're, that's been a growth area for us that we're really struggling to improve in. But we're not alone in that endeavor. But we're close. We're 52 to 50. We want to be 60 to 80. But we tower above our peers in the state and in the region. And then over a seven-year average, we've gone up plus nine, plus 17, all the way up to plus 38 in social studies. So we've made ground on moving our kids just from the low bar, which is what we started out doing, to all the way up to the A level. So we're making progress. Our teachers are really adapting to that and taking that as their philosophy in their class. They can't just worry about the low bar and getting everyone over it. It's got to be moving everybody across the spectrum. And then the last one is masters, 30 to 40%, close to perfect, A+. We would take that any day if we could skew it down to all of our kids making the A+. And you can see here, compared to our peers, we again made lots of progress, especially in that final year before COVID. We made a lot of progress in this area. And over the seven-year period, we made some incredible gains in masters. And so we just wanted you to see what we're going to measure ourselves against once we get data again. And it's going to be two years out, but it'll at least tell us how far we've slipped, if we've slipped at all, because we know without data, and we've been hearing a lot about it lately, in the COVID slide, we know that's real. They came out and said we've, kids have lost three and a half months, along with the two and a half months they lose in summer. So that's all, you know, a half a year of instruction that they've lost. Without data, since we didn't administer the STAR test last spring, what data do we have that would allow us to figure out where students are and where to focus our effort? So we had to kind of think at the beginning of the year, what are, how are we going to get data? And that's when we started going, wow, we really did kind of like the data we got from STAR. We used to give that data to teachers on day one. This is where your kids are. This is where you need to get them by the end of the year. And this year, we were having to think through that process of what kind of data are we going to use? And that's where my colleague, Carrie Fitzpatrick, is going to come in. She's principal of MES, and she's going to give us an example of what campuses have done to address this lack of data with kids and how we've accommodated for that. So I'll turn it over to Carrie. Tough to follow, I know.
He told me I have two minutes. How are you all? Thank you for letting me have just a few minutes of your time. So data is a huge piece of accountability, but not only when you think about state and federal accountabilities. It's the accountability piece that we have for everything we do every single day. When we think data, we have to collect data. We have to collect the right data. We have to understand our data, and then we have to be able to act appropriately on our data. So I'm going to share just a couple of things that we do district-wide, but then mostly specific to what we do at Montgomery Elementary School. That is going to be very similar to what is done on every single campus. So when our kids came to us in August, we knew that it was likely, Dwayne mentioned COVID slide, it was likely that we may have some deficiencies that we hadn't experienced previously. So we're all on the same page, wanting to assess where are our students academically. So in order to do that, we gave some beginning-of-the-year assessments. At the elementary level, one of the things we did was give a universal screener. Those universal screeners are given three times. Why? To make sure we're comparing apples to apples, to make sure that we're collecting the right kinds of data, to make sure that we're using that data to then understand our students better and drive our instruction. So we are currently in the process of giving our middle-of-the-year universal screener, so we have data to compare apples to apples. Which students are progressing? Which students are progressing above expectations? And which students are not and maybe need some additional specific interventions? When you think about multiple sources of data, that can look a variety of ways. So some of the things that I was hoping to highlight that we do on a regular basis include some of the things bulleted on the screen. Collaboratively developing common assessments. That is where each team plans with the end in mind. And so they look at their scope and sequence, they look at the specific TEACs that are supposed to be taught during a specific timeframe. They come together and plan what are the specific goals and objectives of that particular unit. Then, once they teach the unit, the assessment is given, and this particular type of assessment gives them details not only about each individual child, but about their instruction as a whole. So then we have information as to see, are we looking at specific strengths and deficits within a particular group of students? Is everybody making progress? Are our teaching practices as they should be? making process, progress? Are our teaching practices as they should be? Once the common assessment is given, we sit down. Those assessments are uploaded on our campus into Edgeoforia, and Edgeoforia is a data tool that we use to help us recognize strengths, challenges, and specific targets that we want to respond to instructionally. Another example is RTI, Response to Intervention. At the beginning of the year, when we provided those universal screeners, once we had that information, we looked at students that performed in the bottom tenth percentiles. Within the bottom tenth percentile, we looked at each child to determine what specific interventions are needed. Those students are on a six-week reoccurring cycle of data conversations. If, if we meet on a child and they're not making progress, then as a team, administration, counselor, our interventionist, our instructional coach, our diagnostician, we have conversations to make sure that every single child is getting instruction targeted to their specific needs. As I mentioned, those students remain on a six-week cycle, to be certain that we're constantly making sure that we're keeping an eye on their progress. As we have our second round of universal screeners completed, we're going to continue to do the same. Another target that we have identified a need in is, we, we noticed that there were some systemic deficiencies, not only specific to a particular child, and we kind of identified that it was instructional practice. So, we have identified in each grade level vertically aligned and specific to grade-level TEACs that we saw were, that we could improve upon. So, we have created data walls, and teachers are using common assessments and other screening tools to make sure that we are tracking individual students, as well as groups of students. So we have some data walls that we've been working on. We also have individualized student goal-setting and tracking. We are encouraging all students to take ownership in both personal and academic strengths and challenges. If they, and, and we try to incorporate them and their desires, but we also try to help them understand their, their areas that they want to grow. And so students set personalized goals, and we track those, and we have lots of celebrations. This past Friday, I got to meet with two fifth-grade writers who were extremely hesitant. They have what I call writer's block. They couldn't even generate ideas. And now, one of them in particular is writing beautifully. And not only does she now have words on paper, which was a challenge previously, each one has a moral. And so she was able to talk through how she generated her ideas and what she plans to do moving forward. So, we have a lot of celebrations. In the classrooms, small group intervention is probably one of the, the greatest targets that teachers provide on a regular basis. They meet with students on particular skills and all content areas, and they track the individual success of each child. They provide instruction specific to their needs, and the documentation really helps them keep track of which students are progressing with which specific intervention. The last one I've bulleted is what I call KidChat. Once a month, our doors are always open, but once a month, administration and our counselor sits down, and we open our doors. Any teacher who has a concern about a child academically, socially, emotionally, anything, they come in, we visit about that child, and it's, it's kind of like a case study. We put our heads together, and we see what types of interventions, what types of tools we have that can help that particular child move forward. So, those are a few. My point in sharing all of these is, we don't have STAR data, but there are multiple sources of data that we have. Sometimes you have to get a little bit of creative thinking behind not having something that you're used to, but where there's a will, there's a way. And our goal is to make sure that we're adding value to every child.
Is this, is this being used across, is this just Montgomery Elementary, or is this, are these data, so, so you've got a lot of points here that you're measuring, so, right? So everything funnels back to some sort of profile almost, right?
Yes.
So, are these things, these things aren't new, so they've been happening as we come back, but is it, is it just Montgomery Elementary, or are these things being used in other places?
We asked Carrie Fitzpatrick to come forward and really represent all of our colleagues. In December, I visited each of our campuses, and one of my asks was, show me how you use data, how do you use it to inform instruction and meet individual student needs? You know, I think when people tell you run your school district like a business, I always like, well, which business? And, you know, I think there's a lot about teaching that is a lot like the medical profession. If I want to go to the doctor, and the doctor says, hey, you need to get healthier, I need to know, well, why would you say that? What do I need to do? You know, great teachers working under outstanding leadership like Ms. Fitzpatrick were able to use the data, formative data, so then we can turn around and say, well, this is where you are, this is where you need to be. And then each student really needs a personalized plan on how to get there. And so, you group, regroup, you do the progress monitoring, you utilize formative data. And all of these things are similar across all, all ten of our campuses. They're a little different at the secondary level, they're a little different on a Title I campus than, not Title I campus. But I was very pleased to see the robust progress monitoring and data practices that we have across our district. And that's obviously something, as we embark on our work with the strategic plan, we are committed to looking at how we're doing that, how we continue to do it better. And at the end of the day, it's not teaching to a test, but it is making sure we have the data to personalize instruction and get every student from where they are to where they need to be.
Most of these measures are done at each campus. A version of RTI, every single campus. We take the same universal screeners, we glean the same type of data, we have the same sorts of conversations about appropriate interventions. We all work in the same Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. But some of the others, there's a version of, it may not be called exactly what we call it at MES, if that makes sense.
Does it make sense for elementary to be, you walk into Montgomery or Lone Star, you're looking at the same profile of data?
Yeah, there's absolutely some of the universal screeners, some of the common assessments are shared across the district. There are some that are created within the school. And so you want a little bit of a good balance of that. We want some things that we can look at it holistically as a district. And then there's also some things that we respect the professionalism of our teachers and our instructional leaders, to let them do some of the things that their own unique campus. I will say, though, in answer to your question, I would be remiss if I did not mention it, I'm a little bit of a professed data geek. I really love to sit down with teachers and principals and staff and really look at the data, and what do we think it means, what are we thinking we need to do to take it to the next level? And usually, I find myself giving some suggestions, recommendations. I did a lot of listening, a lot of note-taking when we sat down with Ms. Fitzpatrick. She's got some very strong practices. And so part of our goal, as it would be in any professional learning community, is how do we share these things across campuses? How do we take the good work that's happening at Montgomery Elementary School and share it with the other campuses, good practices happening at it, another campus, and share it at Montgomery Elementary School? And that's how we get better, and that's how we learn as a professional learning community.
No, we'll have to say, it's not just data collection. I think it's, it's data collection to, you're kind of looking at, you're looking at a leading indicator rather than lagging indicator, and then you're using it to solve problems, too. So, which is, it's very good.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. McFadden, or?
Oh, I'm not finished.
Yes, he does.
I'm, I'm only on part one. That was part one. We've got seven to go in an hour still. So, we're on part two. Thank you, Carrie. That was awesome. PEEMS data, really, we do have six more, so we'll, we'll go through them fairly quickly. The second part of the annual report is the financial standard reports for eighteen, nineteen. So they're really back there. They are just standard reports that I printed off of the TEA website, and we have to collect together and put it's part of the annual report. It's the actual financial data for the district and the actual financial data for each campus. And so that will be a part of the annual report. The third part is basically just our accreditation status. You know, there's four accreditation statuses in the state of Texas, accredited, accredited, warned, accredited, probation, and not accredited revoked. It's assigned according to your academic accountability, financial accountability, data integrity, and your results-driven accountability. And I'm happy to report that, of course, Montgomery ISD is accredited. So that's the highest you can get. So, it doesn't sound like it, but it is. It should say superior or something. Campus performance objectives are another part of the annual report. Basically, what that is, is we do our campus performance objectives in our campus improvement plans. The performance objectives are in each plan, and you guys approve the performance objectives every year. And then we post the CIPs on the district website as part of the annual report. The interesting part is, in the strategic planning that we're doing now, we will have new performance objectives for the first time in a few years. And so all of our campus improvement plans will be, of course, once it's finalized, we'll be using those performance objectives in their campus improvement plans as well. The next part is, this is always a part that sparks some interest. It's Report on Violent and Criminal Incidents in schools in Texas, across the nation, really. It's required, we're required to publish this, and it's a report on violent and criminal incidents at each campus in the district. They are very specific in what they're asking us to report in this section. There are many other things that we report to the state through PEEMS about any incident that happens on the campus, any discipline incident from a conference with a student for disrespectful behavior, to a drug incident, is all coded and, and reported through PEEMS to the state of Texas. This report only is focused on some very extreme behaviors, and they use this report to assign whether or not you are on a persistently dangerous campus. And so, it's, it's, again, required by statute. They list out the actual incidents that they're looking for. They're all mandatory expulsions, things like murder, some of them are murder, aggravated assault, all those kinds of high level firearms, any of that information. We also have to list what kind of violence intervention policies we have. These are included in our campus improvement plans as well. And so I put a link in the annual plan back to the goal that covers a safe and orderly environment in our schools. And so that has to be listed, and that's covered in our campus improvement plan. But then we do the report here. You'll see lots of zeros. Zeros are good, means we didn't have manslaughter, or aggravated robbery, or felony alcohol violations on our elementary campuses. This is the elementary campuses across, we've got zero incidents. That's what you like to see. On our secondary campuses, we did have two ones. They are felony-controlled substance violation, that's a thirty-six code in the discipline codes. That can be anything from prescription drugs that a student brought to school, to marijuana vape pen that has THC concentrate in it, is a felony, and that, we would have to code that a thirty-six. And so, we only went through two-thirds of the year last year, because we released after spring break. And so, the data, we usually have a few more felony, and that's usually the only category we ever have, is the felony-controlled substance. And, you know, schools are a mirror of your community. We have drugs in our community, so we're going to have the occasional drugs in our school, and we do everything we can to take care of that when we have it. So we did have two. The threshold to get in, listed as a seriously, a serious persistently dangerous school is very high. We would have to have something like fifteen incidents a year on each campus for that school to get there. For three years, you would have to have that. So we are not on any kind of list like that. But we do have to report that data. But we have more incidents that we report to PEEMS that would not show up on that form. Then the other, this is an interesting one to me, is how our students do in second, post-secondary instruction. Once they graduate, how many go to college their first year out, and how, how well they did in college? It lists it by GPA. It's just a report that we pull from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, so it's nothing that we can manipulate. And it's data from the seventeen, eighteen graduates, because they have to, it's from the fall of eighteen, spring of nineteen, and summer of nineteen, school year, so fiscal year nineteen for them, for first year of college. I like to always ask, no one ever answers, but I always ask it, how many, how many of our kids do you think go to college, first year out? What percentage of our high school kids? Anyone? Take a shot? No? Okay, that's good. I wouldn't want to do it either. I can tell you, what you do is you just take the average four-year, we had a hundred and eighty-one kids go to a four-year public university, two-year public college, a hundred and eighty-five, independent, private universities, twenty. We had seven that aren't trackable, that would be, maybe they left the state, because this is a state report to go to a college. We don't count those, we just want to get a percentage. So we add those up, we divide by the total high school graduates that year, and multiply times a hundred. And so we're sixty-two percent of our kids go to college the first year out. Now, you don't know if that's high or low, because we haven't compared it to anything. So I like to compare to things. So our five-year average, I just wanted to put it on there, is sixty. So we're right at our five-year average. We go up and down, because it's, it's different kids every year that are graduating, and they do different things. So I, I took the schools around us, and I thought, well, let's see how we compare to some of the schools around us. I did regions, six schools in Montgomery County. Splendora has thirty percent of their graduates go to a college right after high school. Willis has forty-six percent of their graduates going to school. New Caney, my alma mater, thirty-six percent. I was one of the thirty-six percent that went. Porter High School, thirty-nine percent. And then we get to Magnolia, fifty-six percent. Mag West, forty-nine percent. Conroe Schools, Canyon Creek, forty-two. So they're all kind of in the same general area. College Park's up with us at sixty percent. Conroe High School, forty-four. And then Hawk is a alternative campus, so it's always relatively low. And then Oak Ridge, sixty-three percent compared to our sixty-two for this year. So they're, they're the top. And then the Woodlands High School, fifty-seven percent. And I will, I, I am going to draw it out, that the Woodlands has an incredibly high number of not traceable or not trackable, and I think that's probably because they have a lot of kids that go out of state, and so that number's probably higher. But we are comparing pretty much apples to apples.
Very proud of you, Mr. McFadden.
I know, I didn't want to say that, but I...
And just to dispel any rumors, he does try to round up for anyone who goes to Baylor. We do make sure that Baylor is given no additional weight in these reports, so.
It killed me when we were eighty-nine point four, I tell you. I wanted that ninety really bad that first year we were a B for an eighty-nine point four. But we, we got stuck with the B. Quickly fixed. And then the seventh area is the taper glossary. And I have to include that, because the glossary provides definitions, describes methodologies, and lists sources of each data point in the taper, and it's forty-nine pages long, which is longer than the taper. And then, a Spanish translation version of the taper glossary will be posted along with the paper. All of this is posted on our website, and it's released this month, it just hasn't been released yet. So, and that is the annual report.
Thank you. Now, are there any questions for Mr. McFadden or Ms. Fitzpatrick? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Welcome. Thank you.
Dr. Morrison, next, I believe we have the first reading on a couple of local policy updates recommended by TASB.
Yes, Mr. Fuller. Just for making sure we're clear with our public, when board members ask for a policy change, or staff recommends a policy change, we step forward, we do a robust presentation, try to talk about the policy change, why we're recommending it, what it would do, and then seek to get your approval. The policies that are being put forward to you today are policies that either through federal or state mandates were changed. TASB, State Association, gives us policy guidance in terms of what we would need to change to be in compliance. And so these are just a series of our local policies that are recommended to get us in compliance with state statute.
There are three hundred and sixty-nine pages of policy changes. Are there any questions from the board? I'm not exaggerating that number either. It has been redlined for us, that's, that's very easy to navigate through, so we do get to read them. But are there any questions?
And then, Mr. Fuller, at this meeting, we And then, Mr. Fuller, at this meeting, we share them publicly, and then we'll bring them back for our February board meeting for your approval.
All right, thank you for that information item. Next, I believe we're on our monthly financials. Mr. Chris Lynn.
Do you have this most important in your packet? So I'll be happy to answer it.
Board members, questions?
No.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have a little bit more work to do in, in our closed session tonight, so you're welcome to hang out and see your community board in action, your school board in action. With that, I am going to ask that we move to closed session, we'll be back shortly. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. The time is now 8:19 PM on January 19th. We are returning from closed session. There are no, there is no action to take. The board was dealing with paperwork that we had to sign from earlier things, as well as providing evaluative feedback to Dr. Morrison. With that, I will suggest, I'd like to motion that we close the meeting. Any concerns?
No.
Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.